I want to welcome everyone here to the Eugene City Council work session. And I want to especially welcome all of our Human Rights Commissioners here today. Thank you so much for joining us. We're so glad to have you here. And I'm going to turn this over to City Manager, but I think what I would say is that we all kind of recognize that many of the things that the Human Rights Commission did historically have been taken up by other entities. And so we're evolving into what is the new role of the Human Rights Commission. And it's a very important moment in time, I think, because we hope that with everything that becomes institutionalized into the city, it means we're growing into a real better human rights city, and that's the way it should be. And so where do we go to keep this moving and to really be meaningful and capitalize on what we've got in our potential, I think, is about what we're about today. So I'm sure City Manager will lead us off and be more clear about that. But I just want to say I have great appreciation for you, and I know the council does, and the city does. And the history of the Human Rights Commission is a really strong and admirable history. And with that, we'll start talking about building the future.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. And again, I also welcome everybody here today. Raquel asked if I would facilitate the conversation today, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Before I do so, though, I think most people know that Holly will be leaving us soon. And she's moving on to Colorado, which, having been in Colorado for quite a while, I know it's a great place. However, we prefer that she were to stay here, but we do understand the circumstances around that. So congratulations on your new place. You've done a wonderful job for us here, so we appreciate that.
That means she doesn't have to stay?
No, she'll be staying. She'll be working right up to her last minute.
This is the new policy. In case you were wondering.
A couple of things as we go through this conversation. You might remember from the council perspective, it's been a month or so ago, or a month and a half, we came to the council to talk a little bit about the Human Rights Commission and kind of kick that off. And we mentioned that we really are wanting to have a conversation with the community around the Human Rights Commission and human rights. And in that, the eventual outcomes are really a couple. One is to get policy direction from the council for the future focus of the Human Rights Commission. And so as a result of all of this listening, eventually we'll come back with some recommendations for the council to act upon, not today. And then really, the second piece is to define how the Human Rights City framework applies to Eugene and the roles and responsibilities of the various stakeholders in that, the council, the Human Rights Commission staff, et cetera. So those are really our two eventual outcomes, policy direction from the council, and then how does the Human Rights City framework apply to Eugene and the roles and responsibilities in that. And the way that we're going about trying to achieve those outcomes really is listening to a variety of stakeholders, this being one of those places, doing some review of best practices in the industry and in the profession, evaluating the use of staff resources, evaluating the current ordinance. And today is one of those listening sessions, or one of those listening to a variety of stakeholders. And so all the information that we gather today, we will put together with all of the other information that's being collected, and eventually come back to the council looking for more specific policy direction and defining the framework and how it might apply. And today, we're going to do this in a couple of ways. One, there'll be some structured conversation. When I say structured conversation, it's that we'll go around the circle, everybody gets a chance to have their voice in the room. We'll do a little bit with three-by-five cards. We're kind of used to that. But then we'll also spend quite a bit of the time really in a more facilitated, unstructured conversation and go through a few questions that will allow, hopefully, a little bit broader conversation for everybody to contribute to that. We'll be taking notes. On the structured part, of course, we'll be capturing those notes. On the unstructured part, we have several people that will also be taking notes as a part of that. So that's the intent for today, and we have up to 90 minutes to do that. People ready to go?
About introductions.
That's what's going to be the first question. So I'm going to end up starting with you, Betty. Thank you for mentioning introductions.
I don't know everyone.
For the first question, wait a minute, there's more than just your introduction.
Well, I didn't want to do anything. I just wanted to know who people are.
Unfortunately, you sat next to me.
No, you sat next to me.
It's still unfortunate either way. Does your name, how you are connected to human rights work, not just, not the commission, but just human rights work in general, and why you think it's important that the city engages in equity and human rights work? So your name, how you're connected to human rights work, and then why you think it's important for us as a city to be engaged in that type of work?
Connected in the past as well as the present?
Yes.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we'll end up just going around the circle on that as a way to introduce.
Okay, I'm Betty Taylor. I'm councillor from southeast Eugene, Ward Two, human rights. I worked for women's rights, for racial rights. I helped start a fair housing committee in Springfield, Illinois, a long time ago. I worked for, I was on the state board of National Organization for Women. I've, oh, civil liberties is related, I think, but I started a group, a community discussion on civil liberties during which I met all the crackpots in town. That was another town we don't have any here. Now, the third thing was, you've got my name and some of my connections.
And then why you think it is important that the city engage in human rights work, equity and human rights work?
I think it's important that the city have the right laws in place, and I think we do have now. I don't know that there's anything missing. I remember when a couple, a male couple, came to me and asked what I thought about domestic partnership rights. And I said, "Start with the Human Rights Commission." And I told them I supported it and that they should start there, and they did, and we did pass an ordinance. So I don't know what's left to do that the city can do. I think we have all the laws we need in place, it's just a matter of enforcing them. And I think it's mainly a job for volunteer organizations at this point. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Kelly?
I'm Kelly Osborne, in the City Manager's office, and how I'm connected to human rights work. Through my job, I work with not only Human Rights Commission and Equity and Human Rights staff, staff throughout the organization, and other community members. And I think it's important that we bring our human rights lens to all the work we do. And so I see human rights as being integral to everything we do. So I think that's, I'll say that. And then firstly, I work as a community mediator, and I think that's a human rights job, just doing community mediation, whether it's neighbor to neighbor or business to patron, trying to set balance. And then in terms of the city's role around human rights, I think we can be a model and a leader in the community. I also think that we have, as Councillor Taylor mentioned, we have some responsibilities around protecting rights. And then I also think the way that we deliver services and set budget priorities reflects our commitment to human rights, and that's another place where human rights shows up for the city.
George Pauling, City Council, Ward Four, which is the northeast part of town. As far as human rights work, other than what I do in the council, looking back, I really never took part in any real organized activities or organizations, but the way I was brought up, I guess I've kind of done my own little bit as far as human rights work whenever and wherever I could. You know, my dad instilled some pretty strong beliefs in me. He was honorary chief of a number of Oklahoma Indian tribes. He was a honorary member of the NWAACP. He was the first elected official in Oklahoma County to hire a non-white person for, other than janitorial work, when he was county superintendent of the schools. So that, you know, set my background, and I've kind of tried to follow my dad's footsteps. However, because of my prior occupation, I wasn't able to get out and do the type of work that he did as a teacher and as an educator for all the years that he worked. Why I think the city needs to engage, or why it's important the city engages in human rights work, well, first of all, it's important for us to keep up with emerging issues that affect the diverse, different minority groups that we have within our community, whether it be social, economic, ethnic, or religious group. It's important that we keep on top of that curve so that we can adjust and change when And also, you know, we have to make sure that we, you know, we provide equal protection to everybody, as well as accessibility to all civil city services to everybody. So I think by having a Human Rights Commission, that's kind of a sounding board, kind of a place for people to go to, you know, voice their concerns, maybe vent their concerns, and maybe that way we'll get more volunteers.
Great, thanks.
I'm Pat Farr, City Councillor from Ward Six, which is Bethel, Danable. And a couple of things. One, before the elections in November, when I was elected City Councillor, I asked Mayor Piercy, "If I were to be elected, would you please appoint me to the Human Rights Commission?" First thing I asked the mayor to do, and she granted my wish. Thank you, Mayor, once again. The reason I wanted to be on the Human Rights Commission is I believe that the commission can be an even more valuable tool for the city council, for the entire city organization, to put forward the issues of human rights, both as they arise from the general public and as laws and ideas arise from outside of the community that we can apply inside of the community, not just to the city organization, which I believe is the manager's responsibility, and is very well-equipped to do it with a very great staff, but for us as a council, to take it into the entire community. Now, human rights, to me, one thing significant is that we have the triple bottom line that we talked about, of economic, environment, and social equity. Economic and environment are relatively easy to track and easy to measure. Social equity is a little bit more vague, and I think the Human Rights Commission, from this moment forward, can be a really valuable tool to help define social equity in the city of Eugene, and help make sure that social equity does occur, that we're able to keep track of it, and monitor the progress of social equity throughout the community. We have a lot of work to do, and I hope years and years with the Human Rights Commission will be helping to make sure that the voices of the commissioners are heard throughout the community, and that the legitimate nature of the work of the Human Rights Commission becomes really a beacon for the entire, not just the organization, but the entire city. We have a lot of work to do. Thanks.
My name is Holly Lemesserie, and I work in the Equity and Human Rights Center. And I've had the privilege of being a support staff for the commission for the past two years.
Is this something televised?
I assume so.
I'll be sure that we're talking to the mic.
No.
I just know it'll be hard to hear.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Holly Lemesserie, and I work in the Equity and Human Rights Center and as one of the staff members, and also serve in a support staff role for the Human Rights Commission for the past two years. I believe the human rights work at the city is important because we have such a strong legacy, a strong leadership role in this area. A large portion of the United States looks to us and our expertise of piloting new programs, uplifting voices, doing education around human rights, and of course, our new exciting developments implementing the human rights framework are going to really put us on the cutting edge, where we have a great opportunity to demonstrate excellent leadership and expertise on this. So I think we fill a particular operational niche in our work at the Human Rights Center and the Human Rights Commission that is not necessarily duplicated. I know we've spread into the Police Auditor's Office and Sustainability Commission, but I do think the commission, the Human Rights Commission, does fill a really important niche to help council achieve all of its goals, and lifting voices possibly that we don't otherwise reach unless the Human Rights Commission is out there, reaching out in a welcoming and supportive way to get new folks involved and to feel like the city is responsive and listening to their concerns and their needs. So I think that work that we've been doing for so long has been, has really shown itself to be important to the city. And I'll leave it at that for now. I know we have lots of questions, so.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Andrade. I'm here with the Human Rights Commission. I recently joined the Human Rights Commission. My interest in human rights in the city is because I come from a third world country, South America, who has survived several dictatorships. So I have witnessed firsthand the results of people and the basis in a community, not having a voice or venues to voice their concerns and claim their basic human rights. So I think it's very important that the city, in trying to achieve social justice, maintains this type of work.
My name's Toni Gasso. I am a Commissioner on the Human Rights Commission, as well as I'm Chair of the Human Rights Accessibility Committee. And my work in human rights has been through college. I was active in a lot of human rights organizations, Amnesty International, Students for Free Tibet. And then I'm also, my partner is a Tibetan refugee, so I'm connected that way as well. And then why I think the city should focus on human rights, is that correct? I think the city's responsibility is to protect its citizens in many different facets, so protecting them through their political rights, their social rights, their economic rights. And so the city needs to evolve as our culture evolves, and so I think that that's a way for the framework to take a look at that.
Hi, my name is Chris Pryor. I am the City Councillor representative for Ward Eight, which is southwest Eugene. Why I think, what's my involvement? In my public life as a city councillor, I am involved in human rights very much in terms of advocating and being passionate about wanting to provide and sustain human rights in the community. In my work life, I work for an agency that is very fundamentally involved in the ability to provide and support human rights. And I say "human rights," and when you say that, that's a very profound thing. But most importantly, you also have to, in your personal life, actually believe what it is you're talking about, otherwise it has no depth, it's just a veneer, it's superficial. And so in my personal life, I truly believe and respect the importance of human rights. Why I think it's important for us at the city is, if you look up there, it is one of the three pillars on which this city's vision and values are based. And it's not there by accident, and it's not there as a matter of just deference, it's there because it is important, it is fundamental that human rights be one of the grounding, important values that this community has. And that's why this is such an important thing for us to do publicly, professionally, and personally.
Hi, I'm Andrea Ortiz. I am the City Councillor for Representative Ward Seven, which includes about seven different neighborhoods, so got a lot of constituencies. My personal human rights work started when I was in the seventh grade during the Vietnam War. I led a protest to get everybody out of school, and I got suspended for three days. But I did manage to graduate from high school, so that was good. And I feel like it's kind of intertwined into the fabric of the person that I am. I think it's important for the city to be involved in human rights because I think that as elected officials and as employees, we're representatives of everybody in the community. And if we don't hold those values and beliefs true, then how can we expect our community members to? It's really important to me when we talk about not even racial equity, economic equity, environmental equity, you can put that equity behind any facet of whatever word you want to use, that as a city representative, that we use our, not only our power, but our dollars, our tax dollars wisely to make sure that they reflect that value in this community.
Hello, I'm Iva Boslow, and I am a Human Rights Commissioner. I think to ask how I got involved in human rights is to say, you know, I grew up in North Carolina in the 40s and the 50s. So I was there at the beginning of the sit-ins. My first sit-in was when I was nine, I was in the ninth grade, and I have been involved with civil rights since then. I think it's very interesting because my first year in college, someone asked me to go and hear the speaker, and I really didn't want to do that, but decided to do it. And out came Martin Luther King, and he said, he was still in college, and he said, "You know, I really have an idea, I have a vision of how I want to see the world." And he sat there for 45 minutes talking about that. And I sat there for 45 minutes in my head going, "Why that wouldn't happen? Why black people and white people couldn't sit at a table together? Why I couldn't go to school where I wanted to?" And I thought about that, and that was a long time ago. But here we are, still sitting around tables, and we're still talking, and I see that as a good thing, you know? So when you ask me why I think the city of Portland should be, Eugene should be involved in human rights, I'll tell you. The second day I was in Eugene, I walked to the library, I put my name in, you know, how you do? And the second name that came up after mine was "nigger killer," you know? If you want to know why Eugene should be involved in human rights, it's because this is the kind of thing that happens to people of color often. And so it hadn't happened for a while, and it was very interesting, until in February, I go to, walking on 27th, and we'll laminate and have four white boys holler out on the street, "Nigger, we're going to get you." This is what happens all the time. And so for someone to say, "Why should Eugene be involved in human rights?" is for me difficult, for me to understand why you don't want to be. Why not only me, but all the people who were around me and heard that, you know? That's why we have to have Eugene, that's why we have to have human rights, and that's why we have to continue to talk to each other.
I'm Kitty Piercy, the mayor of Eugene, and I appreciate everything that people have said thus far. I grew up in the time of the women's movement and the civil rights movement and the poverty movement, and all of those things that were all about trying to create a more equitable society. And although we make strides, it's clear that there are more strides to be made every day, and you don't have to go very far. To see the, last week, I'm out at Amazon Park, and there's been hate speech written on the park. Or I'm in the wetlands, and I see Nazi symbols on all the lights in the wetlands. So it's not something that's distant from us, it's something that's around us. And people frequently ask me, "When is this going to be done?" And my answer is, I think it's the human condition that some of us somewhere will be working on it in some way forever, because that is what we will need to do to have the kind of society that's fair and just for everyone. So my life, I have been involved in this all my life, and I certainly carry it with me as mayor every day, in every place I go. I will say with pride that I think we're really working hard at trying to embed it into the fabric of our city. The triple bottom line that Pat talked about is not something casual, it's a real effort for creating that equitable look at our society and every decision that we make as a city. Are we, how well are we doing? Well, we're far from perfection, but we're far from ignoring it either. So I just think it's a work in progress, and we'll call on all of us to give the best we can give all the time. And the comments that are heard by people in our streets, you know, last year, I think it was last year, when we went through a lot of work on how we learn as a community to speak out when we hear things, that people saying things and doing unjust things, those are things that we need to work on and help people do a better job of in our society. Even here, where we think we most of the time do pretty well, people, when they hear things that they know are not okay, are just sort of flummoxed by how to deal with it, how to stand up, and how to help other people. So we have a lot of work to do to help each other be the best we can be in dealing with, making sure everybody feels safe and welcome and has a good life here. And then I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't say that I see almost everything we're facing in our budgets now, throughout the city, in this country, in this state, as basic human rights issues. They are people having the means to live, and everything is off of that. And so it affects our public safety, it affects our, people need jobs, and that's an equity piece, too. So everything's interwoven and connected, and I think it's important work, and I really appreciate it, we have people willing to do this important work.
I'm Alan Zelenka. I'm the City Councillor for East Eugene, the neighborhoods that surround the University of Oregon. I've always, in my adult life, been pretty disgusted by discrimination and cut my political teeth at Berkeley on trying to end apartheid. So, and a lot of my political heroes have been keenly involved in human rights issues, Martin Luther King and Gandhi, and my local hero, Doug Still, who died a while ago, but marched with Martin Luther King and Caesar Chavez. And a good buddy of mine is Greg Rickoff, who was the first human rights analyst here, and the stories that he would tell me were a rose de hair on the back of my neck about things that happened here in little old Eugene. And our history is actually very sordid in this regard, and it's something we need to ever be vigilant about, so it's very important that the city be involved in it. It needs to be something that we integrate into what we do and how we do everything, and that the city needs to set the example, not the other way around. It's not by coincidence that our, one of our vision, our first one, is to value all people. It's very important that we have all voices, all voices be heard, and the Human Rights Commission is a place where that forum can exist for the city and this community. And it's also a function that we should provide, is to protect everybody's rights and expand them where appropriate. And I come more from the economic and environmental aspects of the triple bottom line, and the social equity one is something that we all need to work on. It's the one part of that triple bottom line analysis that we do very poorly. We don't have good metrics about it, we don't have good methodology about it, we don't have good examples of it, and it's something we need desperately work on to get that social equity piece up to the same level of rigor and import that we do to the environmental protection and economics.
I'm George Brown, City Councillor from Ward One. I'm going to skip over my personal resume, I don't know that it's really relevant to today's discussion, but the city definitely, besides providing just the basic services, it's absolutely our role to be involved in human rights. There's, we've got a long ways to go right here in Eugene. It's better here than it is in many communities, but we're far, far from the goal, and we've, there's lots of work to do. And the city absolutely has a role, and I think a calling and a duty to protect the weak and the vulnerable. weak and the vulnerable and the disadvantaged, and it is absolutely our role to do that, so.
My name's Bradine Cuff, I'm on the Human Rights Commission as well as the chair of the Education Outreach Committee. And I'm, I'm very excited that we're, we're here having this conversation. I've been on the commission for several years, and there's, we have a great history, and we've, we've done a lot of good things in the past, and I feel like we're, we're at a moment where we can really sit down and pave a new path for the commission and how the city handles human rights issues. And I'm just very excited to be here at the table with you all, and excited to see where things go.
I'm Michelle Mortensen, I work in the Equity and Human Rights Center, and it's absolutely the best place in the city to work, in my opinion. I jotted down some notes as people were talking, and it, it, the things that come to mind for me are the fact that we live in a university town, we have a lot of new young faces coming to Eugene, which mixes our population in a special way, and Eugene is special all on its own anyway. So I think one of our greatest duties is to step up and embrace all of those differences and look at the ways that our community can be benefited by all the things that make us so well-rounded. And it's hard when you grow, it, it's called growing pains for a reason. But it's those quiet voices that are often timid that need to be heard, that don't feel safe coming forward. And so one of the reasons for me that the Human Rights Office is so special is that that is a welcoming place, it's a place that's safe for people, they can come in and express concerns and have it not feel like it fell on deaf ears, that it will go to the commission, people will hear about it, and we will do what we can, progress is often slow, but we do what we can to make things better and more equitable, and you can actually see and feel tangible change there, so. And that's, embedded in all that is the reason why the city of Eugene needs to continue its fabulous work in human rights in all of its areas, especially the social equity piece of the TBO.
I'm Kristi Hammett, the Central Services Director for the city of Eugene. I am a member of the Diversity, Equity, and Human Rights Board within the city, and have been, been fortunate to be very engaged and very active with that group and learning a lot about what we're doing within our organization, and recognizing, I think, that there is a real gap in understanding as we, you know, several folks have mentioned the triple bottom line and how we really use that as a lens and a framework for making good decisions across the organization and for the community. It, it's really important that we broaden our knowledge and understanding of human rights. I think that a lot of my experience comes from working in the municipal court for approximately 15 years, where human rights and protection for access and equal justice and all of those things are at the core of my foundation for the things that I really value, and I value about, you know, living in Eugene, and proud of this organization for a lot of the good work that's being done. But I do think that human rights and understanding that that is more of, I almost think of it as an umbrella in terms of our decision-making and a lens that we should be looking through consistently as we're making decisions about moving forward. And I'm looking forward to learning more today about how we can do that.
Hi, I'm Sarah Medary, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'm also the interim Planning and Development Director, and I've had a lot of direct involvement with the human rights program and equity program, just in the last three years since I've been in the Assistant City Manager role. Like a lot of you, I had experiences through high school and college where I got involved in lots of different organizations that were fighting for, for animals and humans and everything else, but I have to say that when I moved to Eugene, I was in school here to go to the University of Oregon, I took a year off to hike the Appalachian Trail, came back, and I had a period of time before school started, it was three or four months, I got recruited to volunteer at SAS, which is Sexual Support Services. And I went to a three-day training where they talked about oppression and white privilege and all the numbers of things you need to know about before you can be on the crisis lines and working with people, and that to me was like a major eye-opener, where I realized all the things I've been doing all my life, I just, just didn't really know. And so my family got copies of everything, which I'm sure they really appreciated. But anyway, it was a life changer for me. And so when I think about the city's role, I think about, I kind of think about it through that privileged model of, we're a major landowner in this town, we have the right to, to make laws and enforce laws, we make decisions about where transportation does or doesn't go, what land use patterns, where affordable housing's gonna be located, and what services we're gonna provide, and I think without having a human rights lens that we're looking at all that through, I, I'm not sure we can make the right decisions for this community, so I think it's really important.
I'm Raquel Wells, I'm the Equity and Human Rights Manager, I work in the Equity and Human Rights Center. I'm, um, I have to say that after listening to Iva, I, this is really hard work, and it's really important, and there's a lot of folks who are not heard and not seen, and I think the, we have a responsibility to create bridges and opportunities and be looking out. There's a lot of people who are able to come and share their perspectives, and there's a lot of people who can't. And so I think by doing human rights work, we raise the awareness of those voices that are invisible and not seen, and the conditions that people are experiencing on a daily basis. And I'm gonna stop, sorry.
I am Kurt Corey, the Public Works Director for the city of Eugene, and together with Kristi, served as one of the executive manager's liaisons to the Equity and Human Rights Board, which effectively functions as the steering committee for implementation of the Diversity and Equity Strategic Plan. Certainly don't disagree with anything that's been said around the table, I think all the rationale and nexus is on the mark. I think, I'm also one that has, has never, never had a lot of tolerance for bullies, and, and so that, that kind of leads to treating everyone you meet with dignity and respect is, is just simply the right thing to do. So that, that I think is, is kind of the, the personal basis. You know, I, I also have no problem drawing a business nexus around this work. You know, the, the principles of diversity, equity, and human rights really form the underpinnings for establishing a respectful workplace, without which you don't have the capacity for having the people that are providing the services to the community perform at, at their highest level, which I think is both the expectation and the economic necessity of, of what we do. And I think to the extent we, we remain involved and focus on some of these efforts, we become stronger as an organization, to the extent we become stronger as an organization, it reflects positively and helps establish that culture in the, in the community. So it, to me, is, is that continuum. I've had the opportunity to have a number of one-on-one conversations with, with Raquel in my time here, and, you know, I could probably point to that as one of the single most important and fundamental growth experiences that, that I've had. And what I, what I have learned about this is vastly larger than what I know today, so I appreciate the opportunity to be involved at, at the level that I am.
I was supposed to say her name. I'm Francesca Johnson, and I work for the city. I'm involved because I've been part of the human rights work since I started at the city of Eugene. I kept kicking doors down, and finally they said, "Why don't you come in and help us from within?" And so here I am. Iva, I'm sorry for your experiences. Why is human rights important? It's important because as Iva and Raquel and a member of us can attest, we are challenged because of what we look like on a daily basis or a weekly basis, especially right now with the anti-immigrant sentiment right now. You never know what you can run across. There are times that it's not safe, and I know that that is not something that the city feels it should have a reputation for. Why should you engage in, I think it's been 10 years that we presented at a peace conference in Tucson, Arizona, in Phoenix, Arizona, with Neil, and the, our presentation was, "A municipal model that works." You have a municipal model that works. It needs to be tweaked. What we were doing and what we were addressing 20 years ago are still similar, but the community has changed. And my expectation is that the city walks its talk. I'm really adamant about that, and I will push that you do what you say you're gonna do, and keep it safe and open for everyone in this community.
My name's Mike Clark, and I'm the city councillor for Ward Five, which is north central Eugene. I had the privilege to serve on the Human Rights Commission for two years when I first started on council, and I have to admit that human rights work was not something that was ever highly present in my mind. With those people who are friends of mine, who people I associate with, I'd say that's a, a common sentiment. And so when I started on the Human Rights Commission, I was kind of challenged to figure out what my best role was, what I could do to help. And this young lady next to me, and Mr. Rickoff, helped me real early to understand that maybe one of the utilities I could bring to the process was to kind of translate a little to help by understanding the work and understanding what needs to be done and understanding the sentiment, and be able to speak it to people who think like I do in a way that they'd get it. And I got to help on the Human Rights Commission with a couple pieces about how things were worded in such a way that maybe it could bring more people to the table. The statement up there with the "value all people" proposition was one I'm, I'm proud to have suggested some, some language change for, because I, I think that it does some of that. The importance of the work of the Human Rights Commission, at least for me, reflects around an interesting conversation that I had with one of the other councillors recently, who brought up a subject about what they thought the purpose of government was. And for me, it's real clear that the purpose of our, our American kind of government is spelled out pretty clearly, and in Declaration it says, "All of us are born with certain rights." We're all born with them, the government doesn't give them to us, we're born with them. And the purpose of government is to protect those rights. And I take that very seriously. I may disagree about what a right is and what it isn't with some, but we'll do that. But I think that the very purpose of government in the first place is to protect people's rights. And also in the, for me, it's also something rooted in the, the reason for having our Constitution in the first place is enshrined in the, in the preamble, where it says the, the purpose is to establish justice. And so for me, the best work of the Human Rights Commission helps the council to protect people's rights and to establish justice in our community.
I'm Martha Fish, I'm a previous commissioner and a new commissioner, and I'm happy here with all my friends. I moved here in the 90s when it was a great need for volunteers and interpreters, so I was one of the first volunteers for the Public Safety Session. So we did a lot of good work, we assist the homeless and people in need, and after that I joined the Human Rights Commission, which it was great. And one of the reasons that I decided to come back is because it keeps me connected to accessibility and to the homeless.
What kind of issues come before council that would benefit from a human rights perspective? And this will be a little bit more of a free-flowing conversation, so what kind of issues from each of your perspective would benefit, issues before council would benefit from a human rights perspective? It'd be a little bit of a general conversation, or there's something specific that's also would be helpful to get a sense of where people think on that.
So I just want to initiate the conversation, I'm just gonna throw this out, I just wanna, when I first got on, I was a Human Rights Commissioner for five, six years before I was elected, and my first meeting I went to, there was a couple men who really made an impact on me, and so I'm, I do this in their spirit, it was Ron Chase and Charles Dalton, and they were, they just said some pretty amazing things, it was like throwing firecrackers in the room, and then they both got up and left early. I won't get up and leave early though, I promise. So a while back, the commission had asked the council to pass a resolution on two issues around immigrant, immigrant justice. One of them was around the Dream Act, which we did end up passing, what was worked on. And the other one was an anti, let's see, I think it was an anti-Arizona resolution, and we had asked Kelly if you all would be willing to support the League of, National League of Cities Resolution, because as a city, we really aren't, it's not our charge to, to, we don't have any laws, any jurisdictions over enforcement of immigration, but we can stand and say what we think is a good or a bad thing. So at that point, if I remember, if you can help me remember the scenario, Kelly, if, that we had asked if you all would be willing to support this, and it was my impression that that wasn't what the commission wanted at the time, that they wanted stronger language, they wanted anti-Arizona, they wanted anti-business going to Arizona. And I was trying to find kind of a medium with them, because there's eight of us, and I need at least four votes to get something passed, and that wasn't happening with a total anti-Arizona mentality. And actually, I had been at a Naleo Conference, which is a national association of Latino elected officials, which I'm going to in June, and there were some people in the elevator, these, all these señoras, they were all there, and their faces were down, and I just said, "Oh, where are you guys from?" And they went, "Arizona." And they were, you know, and I, and it really kind of resonated with me, because I see, what I saw were women who had put faith in their elected officials to have them flip once they got to the positions of power. I mean, that was kind of the interpretation I'd gotten. With Latinos being the majority of the voters in Arizona, I just don't know how personally they elect people unless they outright kind of do a two-faced thing, you know, like, I've had this happen to me here as an elected official, I don't know if anybody else has had this experience, anywhere people want the Latino vote or the Latino support, we give it to them, and then they don't carry our water, or they don't carry our message forward. So that kind of had given me, around that same time was the conversation. So if I could have somebody speak to that, I think that would be really helpful for me, because I haven't let it go, I just haven't had the opportunity to bring it up.
I don't, Kelly, Raquel, what?
I'll answer in part, but I think you may want to hear from commissioners as well. I think you're absolutely right, the commissioners were looking for something stronger, but I think it's also important to add, what we heard from commissioners is, "We did our work, now it's up to the council." So I think there was also a sense from the Human Rights Commission that, in terms of what kind of resolution might be done around immigration rights, that it was then in the council's hand, because the commission had taken its action. So I think that's a piece of it as well.
Okay.
Holly, you wanted to add to it, and then, but the outcome back, and then we should...
And understood also the outcome of that was that the council was going to then draft a revised resolution and bring that back, to present back to the commission, just with the revised language and understanding, and not sure where that went, and by then, it was considered, is it still timely? And what's the next step if Arizona happened three months ago, now where do we go next? And I'm... And I'm not sure where, the opportunity to pick it back up and do it.
Betty?
I gave copies of the National League of Cities Resolution to all the councillors and to some staff. And it's a resolution that I helped write, actually. When I met with the group of NLC, National League of Cities leaders, they were very complimentary. They thought our committee had done a very good job. And I think that, I think I had the feeling that we would, of course, we can't discuss these things outside of meetings. I had the feeling that most of the councillors would support that. And I think that would be a good thing to do. I think it would be harmful if we bring up something that's anti-Arizona and people have a big fight about it and it just wouldn't be good. I spoke also to, I know several people who are councillors and mayors from Arizona. And one mayor especially, she said, why would you want to condemn us? And she is Latina.
Andrea, Chris, and then Pat.
So I just wanted to say that, you know, every day in this country, there is anti-immigration legislation being crafted as we speak. So to pick out one state in my mind is not helpful because we would have to be doing anti-Oregon legislation because there are people in Oregon who have anti-immigration legislation that doesn't get out of committees. I'm sure Mike knows about some of them. I mean, you kind of watch that stuff. I don't know if you pay attention to that or whoever else watches. But I know I get little blurbs on my little websites of immigrant rights of which sections of the state have that kind of legislation. So that's kind of why I was going to the national level, the national model, thinking that as a city, you know, we are part of that, that we pay dues and to be a part of that organization. So that's why I was going there. And I just, I thought that we had given that back to them and that they didn't want that. So I wasn't quite sure. So maybe just a miscommunication.
Chris, and then Pat.
Yeah, in fact, the notion of doing something against Arizona, while it could be meaningful, it would be largely symbolic because we don't have a jurisdictional component. And I'm not against symbols, but I was thinking, what could we do that would be largely more than symbolic? And an idea that I had toyed with and talked to a couple of my colleagues and had also mentioned to the city manager was the notion of the Eugene City Council actively passing a resolution in opposition to any legislation that might be proposed in the Oregon Legislature to that effect. In other words, this would be the city of Eugene taking an active effort to propose something that could actually have an impact on legislation that might be considered in the state of Oregon. That moves it from being a symbolic gesture, which is important, to actually being a statement regarding legislation within the state. And I think that was something that I was much more encouraged by because it has, in addition to being symbolic, it has purpose. It can actually mean something. And so that was an idea I was floating and it quite didn't move much further than that. But I think that's the kind of thing that we can do that transcends from being talk to being action. And I, and talk's good, but action is even better. And I thought that was an idea we might consider. In fact, the legislature meets all the time. They meet yearly now and it's still something we could consider doing.
I think that's very well summed up, Chris. That's probably the most appropriate type of action that we could take. But we only have 35 more minutes. And so I'd rather not dwell on a single specific issue. By the way, I am an immigrant and my daughter-in-law is Latina and she does live in Tucson, Arizona. So I have a lot of firsthand input regarding what's happening there. But we have 35 minutes and what I'd like to get out of it personally, and it's not all about me by any means, but what I'd like to hear is how can the city council and the Human Rights Commission work together more closely than they have in the past to really make some things happen as far as forwarding human rights in the community? And not just in the city organization, because I think you guys have a real heavy jump on just about any other organization I've been involved with. But how can we work as a council and as a Human Rights Commission to make things happen? And I'm going to shut up and listen now.
I think there's a couple of questions that'll help get at that exact topic sort of leading into that. Part of I do think is that are there other kinds of issues that come before council that would benefit from a perspective coming from the Human Rights Commission? Because I think that helps lay the groundwork a little bit for that conversation. Are there other kinds of issues that?
How about the exclusion zone? Isn't that a violation of equal rights for everybody?
Okay. Are there other examples here and known over here?
I think one of the major issues that I see is the lack of knowledge of the venues that we have in the city and county. So we need more education because the average citizen doesn't know what is out there, you know, to protect their human rights. So one issue that I would like to work is on putting the, these organizations out there in the community, doing outreach and educational civic work, you know, creating the political conscious that as a citizen, we might have, we may need to have in order to support the work. Otherwise, it's always the same people we use see everywhere doing the same talking. And if you go to your coworkers, they have no clue what is happening in Arizona. So how can we keep doing this talking if we don't have, we don't do the groundwork of educating the citizens?
And the mayor, George, Michelle, and then Chris.
Well, you asked a question, John. In some ways, I think that I can hardly think of a topic that we ever face that doesn't have a human rights component that we should bear in mind. And so the question is, what is the role of the Human Rights Commission? Because I think we all have a role in looking at the human rights implications of everything that we do. And we talk for the triple bottom line tool, but the human rights framework, how to use those within all the things that we do more effectively, I think is something that we all have to do together for the Human Rights Commission. I think one of the unique roles you have is to try to bring to our attention things that you think aren't being attended to, such as better education out in the, in the community. And bringing that to our attention and asking us to find ways to address that. If it comes from the whole of the commission and they think this is something that's really important, you bring it to us and ask us for some action on it. I guess conversely, if we come up with something that is, sort of rises above the normal everyday things that we deal with, that has a, something that we think we need the advice of the Human Rights Commission, it needs to go back for us to ask that question of the Human Rights Commission to help us understand something around an issue that the council's dealing with. So I think it's a two-way street. But I do think that you, the Human Rights Commission, can really help us be better educated ourselves and more aware of things when you bring them to us on a regular basis and let us know what you think are things that we really need to step up and take some action.
I have George and Michelle, Chris, and then Alan.
Well, you know, I agree with the mayor. There isn't anything that the city doesn't do that you can tie into human rights. You know, and we've seen a lot of activity in downtown area, the downtown core, as far as employment opportunity and housing. But it's common knowledge that your property costs downtown in the core area are going to be more expensive, therefore the housing is going to be more expensive. What I would like to see is perhaps not give up any of the effort that we're currently putting into the downtown core because we've got a good start. And I think once some of these major projects are completed, I don't think we'll need to be putting as much effort into maintaining that, that growth and that activity. What I'd like to see is start concentrating on some of the other parts of town as far as employment opportunities and more affordable housing, other than the downtown core and the West University neighborhood. I think, you know, Andrew has brought this up a couple of times. What about, what about my neighborhood, as she says? So I think that, you know, that we need to maybe work somehow to set up a transition of focusing our attention from the downtown, not completely leaving it, leaving it on its own, but putting our focus elsewhere.
And are you suggesting the Human Rights Commission can have a role in helping to do that? Is that part of what you're?
I think they can. I think they can. I think by, you know, the context within the community, the work that they do, the organizations that they're in contact with can maybe come up with some ideas or some locations or work with some of the businesses or some employers or something to help get some of the other areas of the community involved.
Great. Michelle?
Something that we hear a lot of from the community is concerns about homelessness. And several commissioners hold that near and dear to their hearts and the cities involved in Project Homeless Connect. But I, I think we need to find a way to really focus some, some specific energy on that topic. And tagging on to what the mayor was saying in terms of a two-way street, I'd like to see communication avenues between the community, the commission, and the city council be more fluid. Because I think the commissioners want to communicate with council on a regular basis, but because it's a, everybody's busy and there's a, there's a respect for, for what they do and how they do it, I think people are sometimes not sure exactly what's okay and when it's okay to communicate and what form is best. Is it email? Is it phone? Is it okay to call? So I'd like to see some parameters around those things so that communication can actually happen in a constructive way.
Do you have an idea what that might look like?
Actually, I do. I'm wondering if the council buddy system works effectively. How many commissioners and councillors feel like it works? And if it doesn't work, could we tweak it slightly? Because nobody wants more meetings and more time invested in something unless it's going to be beneficial. So that, I think, is something that council and the commission would really need to spend a little bit more time upon and discuss amongst themselves because we already have a conduit with the community to our office. We do need to do more outreach and make ourselves more visible and more accessible. But I think the hinge point for this commission to be functional in a really healthy way is to be able to have that context with the, with the council.
Great. And we're, Chris, and then Alan.
Something that I think the Human Rights Commission could really help me with, this is, this is my request, what you could help me with, would be your perspective on an issue that we have talked about in terms of how to make decisions and respond. And that is around something that I call condition versus behavior. And it gets a little bit of what Betty was talking about in terms of the exclusion zone and the nature of how that is enforced and what the impact is on human rights. And to summarize it quickly, there are those aspects that of our condition that we didn't choose to be, our gender, our ethnicity, our race. Those are things that are, that are conditioned. That can also include things like homelessness, poverty. Those are also conditions. Those are, those are things that, that happen to us or that are just the nature of who we are. It's usually fairly simple to see a human right implication with regard to our gender or our race. Those are, those are our condition. What I think would be helpful for us would be the Human Rights Commission's perspective on at what point do our behaviors influence or challenge our, our aspect as human rights? What I'm getting at is if I choose to be drunk, if I choose to sell drugs, if I choose to be involved in prostitution, if I choose to defecate in a doorway, are those protected human rights? And so I think it's very helpful for us to know if we want to talk about an exclusion zone. It's a bad thing if we're excluding people based on their condition. But is an exclusion zone appropriate or is there a way in which it could be appropriate if the exclusion zone is based on inappropriate behavior? I'm not arguing to have all the answers here, but I would be interested in knowing if you as a Human Rights Commission see challenges in that perspective? If there needs to be some thinking that we need to reshape with regard to what the human rights implications are of behavior? And what does constitute behavior and what does constitute condition? Because the line between the two could definitely be vague. Some people claim that homosexuality is a behavior and not a condition. That's where the line gets really muddy. That's where, that's where the debate, I think, becomes very divisive. And so I would be very interested in knowing what the Human Rights Commission's perspective is on what the city's initiatives can be around trying to address condition and also trying to address behavior and what's appropriate in both forums.
Alan, Andrea, and the mayor.
So all of our standing committees have a dual function from my perspective as the council. Sometimes we ask for information from the standing committees, like the Human Rights Commission or Sustainability Commission or Police Commissioners, one of, one of the standing committees. And that, that's kind of asking them to respond to us. But the other part is that we rely on all of those committees and especially the Human Rights Commission to bring stuff up and bubble it up to our, our, our table. And, and so we have a million things on our plate and we can't always address all of them. So that's why we have these standing committees to bring those emerging issues up to council and, and say, whoa, wait a minute, you guys, you need to pay attention to this and here's our recommendation. And so on emerging issues and expansion and protection of human rights, that's my expectation from the Human Rights Commission is to bring things up. We'll, you know, we'll occasionally tell you what we need help on. And the other thing about being heard among the different commissions, we changed the way that we did council or work sessions a bit so that they're not all 90 minutes. We've broken them up and we want to have more of the commissions come to us on smaller pieces, maybe even 15 minutes, just to get more interaction between the commissions and, and the, and the council. So that we can, we can do better at that, I think. And I think that helps both all the committees and us. And then finally, I guess one of the asks is, is around Envision Eugene, which is a big process that we have going on right now. And a big, and I look at that through the lens of the triple bottom line, the part that, the lack of the social equity part of Envision Eugene is emblematic of how poorly we do that part of the triple bottom line. And I'd encourage the commission to get involved in that more, figure out what it is that, from that perspective, that we can do better as a city and in that, involved in that process. We're going into the phase pretty soon about the, the strategies and we're getting, we're at the strategy session, we're going to go into the tactics part. That part is really important. That's where the rubber meets the road and that's where things like social equity and human rights come into play more. And so bringing, having you guys assess that, how we can do that better would be something I think you should take up and bring back to council, bubble up to council.
Here we have Andrea, Mayor, Kelly, and Raquel.
So we talked about council assignments. You know, there's a kind of this line, this imaginary line that we play with all the boards and commissions that we have a liaison. And it's kind of been out of respect to that councillor that we don't really get involved in that particular assignment if it's not ours. That's something that we need to work on internally as a council because there's ownership that goes with that when you, when that's your assignment. So that's problematic, that's a barrier in my mind. I would like to see perhaps on education and outreach, and I'm always pushing for boards and commission training, when people get appointed to anything that represents the city of Eugene, there's a training. And I would hope that there would be some sort of a component of the, you know, human rights piece of it added on to that. And the third thing I want to say, and I'm kind of not quite sure how to say this, but you know, Pat, I think you kind of cut off the conversation. You know, I don't realize that you, I don't know that you realized that, I don't know if everybody was finished talking about what I'd asked them about, but I felt like you cut me off. And I don't think that you did that purposely, but I'm not going, but I really feel like maybe some other folks might have had something to say, but I kind of feel like you took a left turn.
Kelly, and then Raquel.
Me.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have you right here. I promise, I got you right here. You have a blind spot. Here you go. Straight in front of me. Tough to see those people right in front of me sometimes. Go ahead and take a super round.
Go ahead, you got 20 minutes.
Yeah. My only comment is that I want to say I share with you and I actually believe the council shares with you and some of your members a real concern about homelessness because its implications are in terms of public safety, its implications are in livability, its implications just are everywhere. And so I don't think one of the things that we have is a real work plan for what we would like in our, if we could get, get there. And, and I'm realizing-
And I realize how big it is, and it has to do with far more than us. It has to do with mental health care systems and all of the things that we know are at play in our society right now. But to me, to have a work plan and some strategies and just to work on it, and even if you only just take, if we just together just take a few steps, I feel much better about how we're dealing with it than not, than us just talking about how bad it is. So that's what I would advocate for as a council, has to decide if they want to give direction on that, or you have to come and ask, or how do we want to do that? But from my perspective, there are many things that we know is going to take us a long time to get to where we want to be, but we ought to be consistently working on it all the time, and this is one of those, in my opinion.
Okay. Kelly, then Raquel.
I've heard a lot of issues and a lot to agree with, and I think one of the challenges for human rights work and the work plan for the Human Rights Commission is that it encompasses so much that being focused and strategic and making progress can be really difficult. And so at the same time that counselors ask the Human Rights Commissioners to let you know about emerging issues, I think it can also be really helpful for the Human Rights Commissioners to get some direction from you. So if what you want is for the Human Rights Commissioners to spend some time focusing on housing and homelessness issues, to ask for that, or in terms of something like Envision Eugene, if it's on the horizon, if there's something specific that the Human Rights Commission could do to provide perspective on Envision Eugene or a component of that, to make that request, I think, would focus the Human Rights Commission in a way that could be really meaningful for the Human Rights Commission, and that can be, you know, relevant to you in a timely way. And so I think that can be really helpful, because there are just so many, there are so many issues.
Raquel and Tony.
So I'm just going to echo what Kelly said. Human rights is really broad, just like sustainability is really broad, and it takes lots of folks to work on it. And so recognizing that having some clarity is actually people, and tangible wins is actually something that would help. So whatever clear focus we can get, which is why we're doing this human rights project. So in your AIS, there was attachments around the project, and the hope is, is that we're going to be listening not only to folks here, but out in the community and to commissioners, to really get a sense of where there might be focus, so that we can bring back and get some policy direction. So in the spirit of that, I guess I would be helpful, are there things that council or the commissioners, that you want us to be asking folks out there? What information would be helpful for you to know from, as we're listening to folks? And the other piece that I think, you know, there's lots of great, like little projects, and oh yeah, that sounds good, and that sounds good, that sounds good, and then there's the capacity and tracking all the emerging issues that happen. So the one piece around, it didn't happen when we were asking specific ideas, but it happened earlier when we were doing the kind of round robin, was this idea of helping to define social equity matrix or metrics and integrating human rights framework and TBL, so that we kind of know what we're working on. And so I see that as a specific, maybe, but again, yeah. So are there things that you want us to be asking as we're listening to folks? We're asking folks worst, best, what do you want us to focus on, but are there other things that would be helpful as we're bringing back? So you don't have to answer right now, but just get that information to us. And you have an attachment be kind of where it's laid out, and it says, here's what we're going to be listening with and for whom, and we'll be sending out a follow-up survey to counselors as well, so.
Tony, and then Holly.
So I'm going to kind of echo both Michelle and Kelly, because as a commissioner, there's a big, even though both George and Pat are on the commission and they share information with the rest of the council, there's a huge lack or separation between council and the commission, in my views. We don't see you, we don't hear you, we don't talk to you, we don't, there's not communication. And so, and the example of the whole Arizona thing, huge lack of communication. And if there's a way that the council could, you know, bring a specific issue to us and say, this needs to get addressed on your next meeting, you know, we're expecting some kind of response, or something that would make it, okay, we need to make a decision and focus on this, or otherwise we get, you know, the public comments, and we get wrapped up in all those, and some of the little stuff just kind of ends up unfortunately going aside and not, you know, the lack of focus is not there. And so I think that's a thing that both the commission and the council needs to work on, is some kind of like, not buddy, I don't know, buddy system, I don't know, focus on a topic, you know, those together, both need, the communication needs to be more open, I think.
Holly.
And also on tagging on to that, I think also utilizing the liaison, you know, if council's clear, say, hey, Pat, can you bring this up, Council Fark, can you bring this up at the next meeting, and make sure you have a brief dialogue on the agenda or something? That's another strategic way we could do that. I had commissioners write me who couldn't be here and ask to be sure to bring up our advocacy program, what was formerly the Human Rights Support System, and reinstating that. A lot of our clients that come into the Human Rights Center, this is their first interaction, dealing with a concern that they have, and formerly we would match them up with an advocate to just work through the whole resolution of that situation, whatever it was, whether it was mandated in our code or not. And that volunteer system requires staff, and I think that's where we need to make a very clear indication, that if we're going to support volunteers and case management to that degree, that's a, we're going to need resource to do that. And it's where a lot of commissioners, I would say that definitely the majority of the commissioners are interested in that, and community members as well. It gives us, we have a local Eugene human rights code that protects people from housing discrimination, employment discrimination, and discrimination in our public places. We have teeth there. It's not abstract, it's not obscure, it's very clear that this is where we actually do have some really positive traction and enforcement possibility. And asking someone to call Portland and get on a waiting list at Fair Housing Council, where there's hundreds of people, Portland has their own issues. I think if we could do more of our work in-house in Eugene, rather than calling Bolley a federal agency where they've got hundreds of people to respond to, we can do this in-house. We can take care of our people in Eugene in a one-on-one intimate contact way. We just need to really have a staff resource dedicated to that. We have several, many former people who are connected to that program, and it's still a very rich, wealthy resource that we're not using and not committing to. And I think it comes up over and over again. So I'd say, for me, that's one area to focus.
Mayor.
I think it's always usefulness in having those one-on-one conversations, if you can get them set up, in the partnerships. But I do think you should use another tool that I've seen work pretty effectively with council, that gets them on your mind, and you want to make sure we all get it, and getting a memo in our packet that says, this is something we're concerned about as a Human Rights Commission. We all read very intently everything that's in our weekly packet, and it is an opportunity for counselors then to pick up on that and express their interest to the whole body, and then to take action. And that happens on a pretty regular basis, especially if you need to have the ability to sort of give them background, and you can lay that out in a one-page memo about why, what's come up, why it matters, and ask the question you want to ask of council, and then council can pick that up and look at it and say, we see what's being requested of us, and we can respond back again. I just think it's an efficient way to go after some of the things that you may want to take on, including what you just talked about.
One thing I'd like to do, we have just a couple of minutes left. Can you pass out the cards? Before you leave, read these cards off, but if you're a council member, I'd like you to answer the following question on your card, and make sure you turn it in, and I'll give the commissioners a similar question. If you're a council member, I'd like you to answer the question, what advice do counselors, the council members, and the mayor have for enhancing commission effectiveness and the relationship between the council and the commission? What advice do you have to the HRC? And then if you're a commission member, I'd like you to answer that. What advice do you have to the council for enhancing commission effectiveness and relationships? Reason why I want you to write those down is, one, kind of focus your thoughts, and then we want to capture those so we can have those.
John, can you repeat the counselor question?
What advice do you have to HRC members for enhancing the commission effectiveness and the relationship between the commission and the council? For the commission, it's really the same thing, but what advice do you have to the For improving that relationship and effectiveness?
On the top of your card, you can put advice to council or advice to HRC. That would help us sort of.
Oh, you're not going to recognize our handwriting?
We might, but.
Just the misspellings.
Oh, hush up. Did you hear what he said? Is that correct or what?
No. If you finish those up, if you can pass them towards Raquel, please.
I should wait and listen more.
If you're still writing, that's fine. If you have other thoughts, please continue to provide those. But what I would suggest, kind of moving forward from here, I know Raquel and her team will be doing quite a bit of work on listening sessions. Today, there's a lot more conversation that can be and should be had, I think, between these two bodies, and it, what it feels like to me today is sort of just the start of that conversation. The next time we come back together, what I would suggest is we'll have more definitive information, more information that we've received from a variety of folks, and I think based on that, we can start focusing some of the conversation between this group around some things, what should the focus of human rights be into the future in the Human Rights Commission? How can they focus their work? A little bit more clarity around how to interact between the two bodies and create a really nice flow of information between the two. That adds value both sides of that equation, so there's some value going back and forth through that, that the Human Rights Commission feels like they're being very effective in the work that they're being asked to do by the council, and just create those stronger relationships. And so I think as we come back for the subsequent conversations, we can start focusing some of that conversation and to create some of that, if that makes some sense. Last comments, thoughts? Eva.
I just thought it was very helpful. I came with the idea that, you know, I'm going to listen to the city council, and then I'm going to decide where I'm going to go with human rights, you know? I mean, I came because this is a very complicated time and everything. Also, human rights are not easy, you know? The conditions versus behavior, I was looking at that. I'm a sociologist, so you know, even I sometimes find it hard to tell the difference. So it's not clear, it's not clean, and oftentimes it might not be nice. So, but to have a group of people who would, on a Wednesday, sit down for an hour and a half is really good. I think one of our problems is that we don't let it out enough about how we really feel about human rights. And so when we talk again, I would really like to say, can't we have a, some kind of a campaign on human rights and how it's good, and how in Eugene, human rights is what it is, you know? And that's where we're going to be. That's what I would like to see.
Mayor, I'm back where you are, just a couple of minutes.
I just want to say thank you all very, very much. Thank you for your work, and thanks for having us. We appreciate you very much. Just one more thing came to my mind before we close out, and if we already do something like this, I apologize. But I'm just thinking about how much we like to have information about what kind of things you're hearing about, or the kind of things that are coming through your door, and not so much in, are we going to do about it, or it's risen to a level that we're going to take it on, but just in terms of a report out from what happened. You do it quarterly, whatever works for you, but just sort of, so we see what trends are, so we kind of get a sense of what's going on out in the community on an ongoing basis. That could be very, very helpful to us. That's just my thought. So thank you all very much, and I appreciate you. Thank you.